Okay, welcome everybody to our town council meeting September 20, 2022. Everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda, everybody's comfortable with that. Can I get a motion to approve it? Moved by Councilman Patlum, seconded by Councilman Adol. Be resolved that Council of Town Napo approved the regular meeting agenda for September 20, 2022, all in favor? Kerry? Everybody's had a chance to review the minutes, no errors or omissions, everybody's comfortable with that, can I get a motion on that? Moved by Councilman Drur, seconded by Councilman Perry. Be resolved that the Council of Town Napo approved the minutes of the regular meeting held September 6, 2022 as circulated, all in favor? Kerry? Okay, we are into council reports. Does anybody have a council report today? Councilor, Councilor.
The Napo district handyman had set out an RFP for contractor which closed on September the 12th, 2022. We had three proposals coming for the job of contractor for the handyman. After reviewing all applicants, we had decided to go with Justin Chakolski for contracting for the handyman.
Okay, perfect. So how many years is the contract for?
It's a, well, the contract, it's a five-year contract.
It's five, okay, okay.
We're, we've decided to go with his proposal, we're giving, we're going to meet with him to see if they can go up a contract, because we do have some new, um, just some new little things with insurance and liability, he was asking all sorts of questions, we looked into some of that, so, um, yeah.
Okay, I think I'd just like to compliment the handyman on, you know, it's been, you know, it's just over the years, it's kind of evolved how it occurred, did actually get back into a tender system, I thought it was just such a great idea, and to have three tenders goes to show that there were people interested, so, yeah, good for you guys.
No, it's really good to have, we've sat down, it's taken us a couple of years, but I mean, we've, we've got some big contract, you know, contracts set up so that it can be sustainable. I think the review process that we had with the government was great to help us kind of find a path that's going to be more successful soon.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? Councilman Drur.
Yes, last Thursday, Sayware Estates met. Of course, the Sayware Estates is a fund that's managed by the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation. Annually, we meet as a group to basically go through with the hospital and the personal care home for them to spend the funds earned through the Sayware Estate. The list of the equipment is always guided by them and it's the Town of Napo and the rural partners that get together to make sure that those funds flow properly from the foundation. Rather than getting into actual individual pieces of equipment, you can watch, we saw stretchers and storage cabinets and all things that are critical for the facility, I think what stood out to me the most when we met with those directors of the facility was that the community of Napo has the Sayware Estate, that we've been able to add equipment consistently through the years, where many towns and many rural hospitals are forced to fundraise for some of the simplest, but yet most necessary items for the hospital, because we have a Sayware Estate that, we know this year was putting almost $50,000 in the hands of the personal care home and the hospital, it really lets them keep their equipment up to date to aid the doctors and the nurses in performing their duties. So, on that, I would just like to maybe tack on, and I know this doesn't really fall under the committee portion, but the Town of Napo does have the ability to take donations, and I was speaking with Liz Sumner, and she pointed out that, you know, if people are looking for places that they can donate, they can come to the Town of Napo and make donations that could go towards a new healthcare facility in the community. If not through the Town of Napo, there's always, you know, the ability to go make donations through the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation as well. Originally, when that fund was created, it was $600,000 that was put in through the Sayware Estates, and that was back in the 90s, and it has delivered hundreds of thousands of dollars to those facilities. So when you're talking about long-term impact on the community, that is a great example of what we can do to benefit everyone from Napo going forward.
And you're right, I was sitting at that meeting, and you're right, they are so grateful for that money, right? As you say, it's something they didn't have to fundraise for, I mean, it's just go, wow, this is money that's available every year.
Every year, yes.
No, it's very good. Thank you, Daryl. Anybody else? Seconded by Perry.
Okay, so, we put out tenders for the Beautiful Plains Community Clinic to remove and replace and repair if necessary anything on the west side of the clinic, which is basically the original portion of the clinic. So that tender should be in the next paper, as well as a tender for building a canopy over the south entrance doors, and people who are responding to the tender will, you know, they'll connect and we'll send out the information to them so that they can bid on, and the tenders will be closing just before the next clinic meeting. And we have the Pharma Leisure Lottery coming up, which does support the clinic, and I am not going to give you the dates just yet, because there are, there's a slight delay with the lottery's commission getting everything done, it seems to be backlogged a bit, that's okay, it'll still happen. And with the clinic, they put out the announcement that they have a new doctor, and people are, you know, want, who are wanting to be part of the clients for that new doctor are to contact the clinic by phone or in person to get on the doctor's list. We are working towards an LPN program, and so we've been doing, you know, a lot of work trying to satisfy the dean of college nursing and the requirements that they want for building, and, and more details will be coming with that, but we, we've submitted an application for the program, and so we do have to be approved for that. And we've previously held a night of interest where we had around 90 people show up showing that they wanted to take LPN training, so we'll be doing that in the near future. We had Minister Clark here, I believe it was Friday, Minister of Municipal Relations, and I imagine your honor is going to talk about that little clock over there later, so we'll leave that for you.
Okay, thank you.
And tomorrow, I have the honor of going with your honor.
I will, sir.
It's to a summit for the strategies for physician recruitment of strong rural and northern healthcare, so, and that's being held in Portage Flue Prairie, as long as that resolution gets passed today.
So can you just go back to the nursing one again? So it's going, it's supposedly going to start next September, right?
Yeah, September 2023.
It's a two-year course.
Start date.
It's a two-year course.
It's a 18-month course.
Okay.
But, you know, they have a two-year window between courses.
And it can hold 25 people?
25 people.
Correct. And we're, we've been pretty targeted, like, we're pretty comfortable, we can come up with a space for this right now?
Yeah, we've got several locations that, the sites would meet the requirements, we just have to give them the walls and the dimensions and produce the building, and, you know, there's a lease agreement that will be in there to actually pay for, you know, we'll have revenue coming in from it. So it's a good fit for Napo, and of course, we do have a substantial increase in staff requirements for the new hospital, and this is one of the ways that we are trying to address that. And a summit, another way to try and address the physician recruitment.
And I think we're hoping if we got a foot in the door in a two-year, then maybe we can make it.
Contenders.
Yes, exactly.
We provide a good location, we provide something that they want to keep.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? Jason, no library?
You know, we meet tomorrow, right? I'll save that for the next meeting, okay?
Thank you. Okay, Denise, you're up. I'm sure we're going to talk about streets at some point.
Yeah, we can talk about some streets. Most normally, paving was completed on Commerce Street West. Residents may know there's a sort of disruption in traffic flow down there, but we have a complete come-in and complete paving from Highway 5 while there's the 3rd Avenue, so we did a new product in that street, so you have to do a synthetic grid within the paving layers, so we'll try it out and see how that works on some poor soil conditioners.
So the question I was asked was, why only that part of Commerce Street?
Because that's the part that we found that's got the most silt in the subsoil. Another question I was asked is, why didn't I dig it all up? And I think it was just, even with speaking with Maple Leaf, they showed a lot of hesitancy because it's supposed to be cracked that open, we weren't sure how deep we'd have to go stabilize that soil, looking at it around it, so that's where we made a decision to go with an overlay and try this grid product within the paving. So I'm optimistic it'll work, and excited to kind of try something.
Okay.
Again, we've got people that came back, they returned with their concrete crew, so we were able to do curbing on Mountain Avenue right in front of the Elhead, we're doing an intersection alignment correction, I guess they're called, we'll get that skewed intersection corrected, and then we also have them working on Davidson Street, so I had an under background so the paving crew will be back to complete the final portion of this work, but we still need to see some cure time on that concrete before they can come anyway, so. I have residents being also, hydro crews have started the streetlight installation on the CN side, so we have the commercial sector that's getting the streetlights put out. The water treatment on Red Door project is still ongoing, we're having some poor running issues, so we're trying to resolve those low rate down and see when we can get that product up running on the street. The RCMP project is also nearing completion, I think it will be scheduled now, so we'll have to see if they can hold that target up. There was some minor efficiency that has to be corrected after RCMP can do some final inspections. Both of the contractors working on concrete, there's around town, some of the curbs are broken, utility cuts, sidewalk damage, all that stuff, so they're thriving with the ground town, it stands for residents to be patient, and our contractor will get to each location in due time. We have not set a fall pickup date for compost yet, kind of waiting to see for, especially the first kilo for us to come in, and then we'll start seeing, I think once we have that, then we'll notify residents, we'll do some Facebook posts, some social media, newspaper and whatnot, just notifying when pickup schedules will start, so the residents can start with that.
Okay, any questions, any comments? Just, Councilman Drur.
Just one question, with the paving crews in town, does that include the post-court location of my health care?
It should, they told me it's on the list, just like every other one right down, so they're optimistic.
Okay.
I just got to hand them and find out where that paving crew is and hopefully get some, some timelines out of them again.
Okay. Councilman Perry.
Can you speak on the extension of Isabel through the old East Blue Otter site?
That may be on hold because we had overage on our super lining contract, so we'll have to see how our budgets align there, because we can't run a deficit next year. So we're going to see how everything works out with the servicing of Mill Street, the apartments, and see how they all come together. Come later fall, early winter, if there's still some time, some money left, then I'll be looking at it.
Okay, thank you, Denise. Moving on to finance, August plans will be, everybody's had a chance to review that? No issues? Can I get, move forward with the resolution, please? Moved by Councilman Drur, seconded by Councilman Concentra. Be resolved that we approved a financial statement for the month ended August 31, 2022, all in favor? And Colleen, we're into supplemental taxes.
So this is supplementary additions and deletions for the year 2022. Mind you, there are three entries that were not captured in 2021. Forty-five properties will see an addition to the tax roll this year, and nine will see a reduction. So we see an additions to the tax roll and dollar value of $198,000 roughly, and deletions of about $10,000, so we have net new addition to the tax roll of $187,690.696.
Okay, perfect. Any questions, any comments? Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution, moved by, seconded by, Councilman Concentra. Be resolved that in accordance with Section 326 of the Municipal Act, the Council of the Town of Napo approved supplementary additions and deletions to 2022 tax roll as per information received from the Provincial Assessment Branch. The detailed listing of the tax is Schedule A and reflects a net added tax value of All in favor? Kerry? Okay, Colleen, Napo has been senior housing initiative.
So following the construction of the K2 building, they made an application to our development incentive file that was passed in 2017. The application they made was based on the tax incentive of multi-unit residential progressive tax incentive for the ability of 3, 6, or more blown units. So the criteria to get that incentive, and it's a phasing in of the, basically, the progressive tax trend over a period of three years, is you have to increase the assessed value of the property by a minimum of $750,000. So just in receiving our supplement that we just passed, that K2 is actually on there for increasing assessment by a little bit over $5 million, so clearly meets the criteria of receiving an incentive. So I'm requesting the credit to the tax roll starting in the year 2022, because I have a full ton must-to-work with of $33,888.50 credited to their roll for starting year one this year, and two more years to be at a base of 50%, and then 25, following this year, which was 75%.
Okay, I think that's pretty straightforward. Move forward with that motion, moved by, Councilman Perry, seconded by Councilman Adol. Whereas Napo Kinzman Senior Citizen Housing Inc. has constructed a 48-suite assisted living facility at 307 Davidson Street and has submitted an application under bylaw number 3176-17 to be considered for a development incentive. And whereas the Town of Napo is now on receipt of the 2022 supplemental assistance information confirming that Napo Kinzman Senior Citizen Housing Inc. has met the required assessment threshold, deem them eligible for a development incentive, therefore, be resolved that we approve application 1-2022 of Napo Kinzman Senior Citizen Housing Inc. providing for a development incentive as per Section 2-2-13 of bylaw 316-17 resulting in the phasing in of the general municipal portion of taxes over a three-year term starting in 2022. All in favor? Thank you. Seconding Mary Heather, removing himself from conflict, right now moving into the same thing for the Napo Glass Home Quop, is that correct?
Yeah, so the Quop actually built a new 50,000 square foot cold storage lumber shed or an auto-stat type building, it was, also came in on the supplemental assessment for a period of eight months, so under our bylaw, because I don't have four years to work with, I'm asking actually for approval to start their program, which would come to the actual start in 2023. They qualify under the commercial and industrial tax incentive, Part B, which said any development that increases the assessed value of the property by a minimum of $1 million, you get the four years of a 60, 40, and 20% reduction. Their assessment came in at a greater than $2 million, so they qualified by double the allotment, that was the criteria, so I'm suggesting that the approval go forward and be applied to the year 2023 on for a term of four years. I don't have a value for you at the moment taxation, because I am not actually applying any credit to this year's tax.
Okay, if we're comfortable with that, we'll move forward with the resolution, moved by Councilman Drur, seconded by Councilman Adol. Whereas the Napo Glass Home Quop has constructed a new 15,400 square foot cold storage lumber shed at 300 PTH 5 North and has submitted an application under bylaw number 3176-17 to be considered for a development incentive. And whereas the Town of Napo is now on receipt of the 2022 supplemental assessment information confirming that the Napo Glass Home Quop Limited has met the required assessment threshold, deem them eligible for a development incentive, therefore, be resolved that we approve application 2-2022 of Napo Glass Home Quop Limited providing for a development incentive as per Section 2-14b of bylaw 3176-17 resulting in the phasing in of the general municipal portion of taxes over a four-year term starting in 2023. All in favor? Kerry? Okay, new business, we're into the physical recruitment, which Murray talked about.
So this is a summit registration that we received for our mayor to attend in Council of Parity, as he says, only community clinic, it's for physician recruitment and retention in rural northern Manitoba, to be held Wednesday, September 21, in Portage. So normally, we have a blanket policy that allows for regular attendance at the Association of Manitoba municipalities and similar type meetings, however, this being an out-of-town meeting that does not fall to the criteria listed on our blanket policy, I am in council's approval for them to attend this in Portage, it's actually tomorrow, so that's the resolution that we dispute.
Okay, pretty straightforward, moving forward. At least I think it's straightforward. Moved by Councilwoman Debbie Rehman, seconded by Councilwoman, oh, Adol, sorry. Be resolved that we approve Mayor McCutcheon and Councilman Perry to attend the physician recruitment and retention in rural and northern Manitoba Summit, held in Portage on September 21, 2022, all in favor? Kerry? Okay, the town is purchasing some property, Colleen.
So a piece of property came up, it is a hangar actually at the airport, so everybody knows we, Town of Napo owns the airport property. People that own hangars up there, they should lease their hangars, or lease the property that their hangars sit on up there, so a particular hangar came up for sale. Internally, we took a good look at this and very preliminary spoke with council about it. We are looking to purchase this particular hangar under by Bruce Cook for a value of $12,500, and the idea being that we do get calls every once in a while for people that would like to land a plane and possibly store it somewhere at the airport. We don't have any ability to do that right now, and we also, in the past, have been questionable whether the possibility exists to having a training center out there for learning out flying planes. So I figure this is an opportunity that for this type of value, we could own a hangar and maybe allow through economic development, the promotion of a training center at our airport in Napo, or just evolve somehow so that we could offer overnight storage or something for a plane shed one console. $12,500 is what was agreed on with Mr. Cook in view of support of this resolution and moving forward, and we would conclude this deal.
Any comments? Yeah, Councilman Drur.
I'm also very supportive of this, because in the past, we've seen a lot of hangars being used for private storage and not hangar facilities out there, so I know there's a way we can also ensure that doesn't happen with this facility, so that's a good thing.
No, I think that's a good statement. Thank you, Daryl. Everybody else comfortable? We'll move forward with that resolution, moved by, Councilman Concentra, seconded by, Councilman Perry. Be resolved that we approved the purchase of the building located at 224 Airport Road for Bruce Cook, getting $12,500, all in favor? Kerry? Okay, the famous Park Lake.
So everybody probably, everybody's probably wondering when they're going to see some action at Park Lake, I think you most recently have been aware that the bridge is open, the old culvert system that was put in there, and I shouldn't say old, the temporary culvert system is still under review with the Department of Finance or Transport, sorry, to make sure that removal is done according to their terms, so it's currently being advertised for removal, we'll see that go on hopefully in the next month, maybe. But in the meantime, the work continues on Park Lake, so Napo continues to remediate and restore all infrastructure damage during the 2020 flood. Approved for disaster financial assistance, Napo needs services from Stamtech Consulting to investigate the restoration of the park lake to the pre-disaster conditions. In doing so, it was understood that the project had to meet all current day standards under Canadian Dam Association Dam Safety Guidelines. After a lengthy review, which included hydraulic and geological testing, Stamtech prepared a detailed design for restoring Park Lake based on meeting those current day standards. The design takes into account the replacement of the dam structure, the spillway, and remedying all the damage areas. So the project did both tender with closing date of August 5, and upon reviewing the tender, it was clear that the actual cost of the project was greater than the value originally estimated as part of the disaster financial assistance plan. Those projections at the time were just a very vague pre-estimate based on the knowledge at the time, based on the construction industry at the time, it was difficult to come up with that estimate. To ensure funding is in place to proceed with the tender, knowing that these bids came in higher than the pre-estimated value, I took the time to communicate the Manitoba Emergency Measures and Organizations, discuss the tenders that we did receive, and look at measuring them against the preliminary cost estimates. I guess the concern at the time was that we would have to fund the difference or we would not proceed with the project. So after reviewing the tenders, I sent everything to them, Manitoba Emergency Measures did confirm Napo has the ability to proceed with remediation of Park Lake, and they do concur with the recommendation of Stamtech Consulting to accept the bid of TriCore projects in around It is, just so you know, the bids did come in, it averaged $10,000, or $10,500 up to almost $50 million. They measured them based on criteria that they, they take into account as far as experience in doing these jobs, the sub-tenders that are coming in, the materials that are going to be provided, the insurance and liability that they, they associated with the bid package they're bringing in, and felt that actually the number two competitor was the bid to go with based on mostly experience and the concrete that they're going to provide with the spillway. So with Manitoba Emergency Measures online agreeing that this will all be covered under disaster assistance, there will be no costs to Napo, they do support the recommendation of going to TriCore projects, we're hoping you will as well as council, and we can get them a opinion on that.
So how does that work? I understand it's all funded, it's all being paid for, 90% by the developer, correct?
Hundred percent.
Hmm?
Hundred percent.
That one? Okay, all right, all right.
It's closed through promise, so to be clear, the lines come through, here, here's promise, but it all comes better.
Okay, so do we, does Denise, or does anyone in the town have control on what's happening out there? Like, do you show up and go, how's it going, or?
Attend a construction meeting, but for the most part, it's all being managed by Stamtech.
So you would sit in a construction?
We, we talk to them regularly.
Okay, but once this general contractor engages, it's, it's his show.
Yep, a little bit of collaborative work, but I think they're, they're true.
Okay, and then was there a timeline to that, is that, was there a timeline?
They're hoping to be done by the end of 2023, but they kind of left it open for the, the bidders, because, just because of, it's basically the raw, long down, the construction industry is very difficult, it's hot right now, so they felt if they tightened the reins too much on the timeframes, we were going to get very, the bids that maybe weren't complete for people that just didn't want to bid, so to make sure we got sufficient amount of bids, they, they felt that we would let them set the schedule.
Okay, any other comments? Yeah, Councilman Perry?
The work that's being completed is about spillway replacement, dam replacement, the noise coverage dredging of the lake, and it's, the disaster financial system only replaces what was damaged in that flood.
Yes, so they will create pockets though, to reutilize some of the material that exists in the, in the land there, but they, they will not be dredging. If, when we talked at the very, at the onset of this project, knowing we'd like to have a dredge, you may as well add two, three million to the project, we would have to fund that, we just don't have it. And in the end, all the information that came back, there's not going to be sufficient turnover of water in there to make it anything more than it is, it's going to be ducts and very minor activity, more of an environmental impact than a recreational per se, so you might get, we're trying to create pathways for canoes and rolling edges and things like that, but that's the limitations as far as recreation.
Okay, and if there's nothing else, we'll move forward with that resolution, moved by, Councilman Adol, seconded by, Councilman Drur. Be resolved that we approved the bid of TriCore projects limited for reneation of Park Lake Dam Reservoir Napo of $11,227,810 plus GST, all in favor? Kerry?
The easiest way.
Being numbered is such a big number. Our annual budget again is how much?
Yes.
Okay, we are into the active transportation study, Colleen.
So this is just moving forward as something that you've all been made aware of, but in July, the town was successful in a grant application to the Infrastructure Canada to have an active transportation study done. The grant that we received was $50,000 and will be paid in a month sum. As of September 6, we submitted everything we needed possibly submit to them, and we went back actually and looked at our request proposals and post, and we, we had three companies come back, or actually two, we sent them, so we had Urban Systems, WSP, and Scott, like you and Murray, and they had a month to pull, and what we received back were bids from Urban Systems and WSP, and you have a summary there, we are recommending Urban Systems, if you take tax into account, one bid with, one bid without, at Urban Systems- account for one bid with one bid about, uh, Urban Systems actually will bid and we are recommending we go with Urban Systems to do this proposal at forty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars and ninety cents taxes in.
Counsel Parrot. So this is covered by that grant. And who in the town staff will be overseeing this group?
Um, Heidi's working on this, our recreation, uh, director. And, uh, I know Denise has been involved, so yes, our, our economic development. So kind of a pleasure. Um, unless you want to speak more to that?
No, we'll be working directly, uh, as part of the process. They'll also do a few, uh, roundtable meetings. So we'll have participation from council. We'll have an opportunity there as well.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution. Move by. Counselor Costencheck. Second by Counselor Parrot. Be resolved that we accept the tender of Urban Systems to complete an active transportation study for Neepaw in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety cents. All in favor? Parrot. Okay, we're down to other business. So I didn't realize this was here for, yeah, so anyhow, um, I guess I had to talk first. Um, so yeah, um, our minister is here, Adam Clark. And this is a, a speech he gave in, uh, the legislature on March ninth, two thousand twenty-two. So is this something I should read out to? Yeah, okay. So it's not that long and it does say good things about our community. So it gives me great pride to recognize and acknowledge the hard work and the efforts of Manitowans who have put into their communities during the challenging last three years. Those in leadership roles and businesses in our communities have worked endlessly to support and maintain their city, town, municipality, as well as their neighbors. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize one of these examples in my constituency and contribute to the town of Neepaw. Since two thousand sixteen, Neepaw has seen a twenty-three point three percent increase in population, making it the third largest group growth in the province and the thirteenth fastest growing community in all of Canada. Not only has Neepaw seen an incredible population growth, but more particularly, it has a significant economic growth in the last two years. It's clear the COVID pandemic did not slow the progress of this thriving rural community. With such significant growth, housing becomes a top priority and Neepaw is certainly working to meet those needs with two new senior complexes built, two family units under construction, and several housing developments breaking ground, all which impact the housing front. It is exciting to see the population grow in this rural community of Manitoba. With the new growth comes investment and new opportunities. During the last year alone, the town has seen many new businesses, organizations transition as well as expand. The town hopes to add a water slide to its recreation options and is the best western in its list of hotel accommodations. A special, special thank you to Mayor Blake McCutcheon and his council, CEO Colleen Chitichin, and in economic development, Officer Mayor Prue, as well as all of their staff. This has been an unprecedented time in our history and it has not been easy, but you have all gone above and beyond the call of duty and continue to work through the many challenges brought on by COVID. I want to say thank you for your vision, strategic planning, and continued commitment to economic growth and development in rural Manitoba as well as your town. Thank you for your future developments and I wish you much success for the town of Neepaw. Eileen Clark, M L A, for Agassi constituency. Yeah, so that was a pretty, pretty nice statement that she gave us. Yeah, I mean, we are a town that's obviously got lots in front of us, right? It's a new hospital and more housing developments, I hope, and more streets, I'm sure, right, Denise? Anybody else have any comments they'd like to talk about tonight? Yes, Counsel Dope.
You know, uh, a few residents commented on a few, uh, small safety concerns. And what, what it is, is just a lot of foliage. So if you're on Fifth Street and you're coming, by Derek Queen, and you're coming onto the highway, there's a hedge that's really overgrown, so it makes it really a blind spot. And that's just, uh, one, one area. And then on Fourth, we have a stop sign that's covered with some foliage too. So really easy to, to solve. But, uh, I could give you more details after about those couple spots. That's it. That was a couple safety things.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Okay, if that's it, then I guess we're going to, uh, are we about to go with the camera? Or just kind of?
Um, yeah, we need to prove this. We do have some matters to finish.
So we're just going to go to adjournment?
Yeah, we'll just.
Okay, we're going to move to adjournment of this meeting. Move by Counselor Dope. Second by Counselor Costencheck. Be resolved that the council of town Neepaw, uh, approved the adjournment. We're going to meet the council at seven thirty-five PM. All in favor?